And what is good and fitting for the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. We pray for the agenda set us for us today. Please give us assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work and around our beloved city of Miami Springs. It's in your most blessed name we pray, amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge.
Yes, before we do the pledge, I want to say a prayer for a beloved retired police officer of Miami Springs dedicated is a long time in the city. Uh, Daryl Kates. Uh, he's ill and we would like to have a prayer in his name, please. Moment of silence. Okay, um. We'll start with the uh, the pledge allegiance. You boys guys want to come up and head the uh, pledge allegiance to the flag, thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to add, I guess, uh, business through the uh, of adding two members to the Centennial Committee. Like to uh, push it over to other business, be 12D.
This would be a discussion item for council's consideration. Vice Mayor would like to add the item to 12D.
Okay.
Other business.
Well, B.
D.
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 And it was a discussion about adding, adding members of the Centennial.
Two more members to non-voting members.
Specifically non-voting members. Okay, um, I guess we're gonna start with the awards presentation. Um, believe uh,
Four B.
Senator, yeah, 12B, right? Cause Senator is not here today. Four B, um, Fire Chief Ray, I believe is here.
All right, uh, good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Manager, City Clerk, to the Police Chief and all the residents of Miami Springs. Uh, thank you for this opportunity and honor to present the 2022 Service Delivery Report for Miami Date Fire Rescue. My name is Ray Jaddala, Fire Chief of Miami Date Fire Rescue, and I'd also like to uh, recognize some of my team members. Um, first is Danny Cardeso, Chief of Operations, Deputy Chief of Operations, Erica Benitez, my Chief of Staff, Maria Reyes, my Assistant Director of Administrative Services, and Horatio Rodriguez, Division Chief of North Operations. Um, I have a presentation here, it's two parts. Uh, we would, I'd like to start off with a video, uh, department overview, and we'll go into the PowerPoint soon thereafter. So if we could start off with the video, please? All right, I apologize for the lag, uh, the little lag there, so. All right, so the second part is the 2022 Service Delivery Report for 2000, again for 2022. So Department Overview originated in 1935. Uh, we are one of the largest fire departments in the country, the sixth largest out of all the fire departments in the country. Uh, we are the largest in the Southeast. We have over 2,800 employees and we continue to grow. We have 158 frontline units, um, including specialty units such as hazmat and technical rescue. We operate out of 71 fire stations, including Station 35 here in Miami Springs. We have two full-time air rescues that are in service, including the two fireboats. And we are accredited by the Commission on Fire Accreditation. That we're one of only 310 fire departments out of 30, 40,000 fire departments across the United States. And what that means to the residents, to the council, to Miami Date Fire Rescue, we have the latest in regards to policy and procedures, to equipment, to training. So you know, we're always, you know, at the cutting edge in regards to all those various items. So highlight for MDFR in 2022. We placed uh, three brand-new units into service, um, one of which just operates just on the outside of the city of Miami Springs, Rescue 17. We also placed a high axle water vehicle that's used throughout the entire county. Uh, we now have a total of four high axle water vehicles. Last year, we hired 92 firefighters. Uh, this year, we're up to 84, and we do have a class starting next Monday of 60 firefighters. So in regards to the city of Miami Springs, you know, Miami, uh, MDFR has served Miami Springs since 1975. Uh, we ran just over 2,200 calls in Miami Springs. We have an average of six minutes and 41 seconds or less, and 91% of those calls operate out of two fire stations, Station 35 right here, um, and Station 59, which is right off of 36th Street and 57th Avenue. Uh, we do operate out of a, uh, we do have a couple of fire stations that do respond here when uh, the units are either on other calls or it's a large incident. And I'm, I'll describe those large incidents here in a moment. So again, Station 35 and Station 59, and Station 59 is a, the airport station, but it does, the, uh, the unit does report here, uh, in the event that there's assistance needed. This is the geographical map of Miami Springs, it's highlighted yellow, it's a shade of yellow that's slightly different from the uh, uh, from the rest of the geographical map. As you can see, Station 35 is relatively center of Miami Springs, and we have quite a few stations on the outskirts, including Station 59, Station 17, which we just placed a new rescue last year into service. As you see here, you know, Station 35, which is in the, uh, the heart of Miami Springs, we have an additional approximately seven stations that at some point may have to respond to Miami Springs. And it could be for assistance and it could be for a major incident, so.
Sorry, I don't like mosquitoes, I'm sorry.
So, so a typical, you know, if there was a structure fire in Miami Springs, it's not handled by just one fire truck or one rescue truck. There's actually resources that get dispatched from all over the area. So a, a house fire would generate roughly three fire trucks, two medical rescues, and two commanding officers. And of course, you know, the buildings such as commercial occupancies, apartment buildings would generate more response. So on any given day, these are the stations that typically would respond to Miami Springs if necessary. And though it's kind of cut off here, it does show that there's 50 firefighter medics that are on duty every day that would respond to Miami Springs if necessary. A community engagement, so Miami Date Fire Rescue is not just about fire and emergency services, it's also about community engagement. And here in 2022, Miami Date Fire provided 410 residents of Miami Springs educational resources. And these are just a couple of dates that we, we actually attended and provided these resources. One was to the Miami Springs Health and Wellness, and of course, you know, Bring Your Child to Work Day. Yeah, we're gonna have to fix that in. And always have a plan B, oh. Uh, this is just another community engagement, we provide, we actually attended the uh, 2022 Fourth of July Parade. And then customer feedback surveys. So we do randomly send surveys to residents when we do provide emergency services. And 2022, 33 city residents actually returned surveys, giving us a score of 4.88, a 98% satisfaction rate. These are residents strictly in the city of Miami Springs, it's not anyone outside of Miami Springs. So this was for 2022. And we put up a couple of quotes in regards to the surveys that were sent to us, and I'll read one, "We called a couple of times and the service that we got was perfect. Keep up the good work and God bless you all." And again, these are city residents from Miami Springs. And that, Mr. Vice Mayor, you know, wraps up the 2022 Service Delivery Report. I open the floor for any questions.
No, I think, uh, Fire Chief Ray, I really appreciate your commitment, your staff's commitment and to our community. I think we, uh, it's an understatement, see how much we appreciate you guys, and we know you're one of ours. Uh, so thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor. So again, just to echo those sentiments, it's uh, it, it gives us such uh, such confidence and calm to know that we've got the folks here in Station 35, and I'm the principal down the street, and they've always been very responsive and very professional, and, and they're part of this community, and we couldn't be happier with the service we're getting from them and from Miami Date Fire in general, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
To the chair. I have the same sentiments, I've, uh, I've experienced personally your services, so I do thank you from the bottom of my heart as well, so keep up the good work and God bless you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That when there's a fire, everyone's running out and you guys are running.
Thank you, sir.
Our blessings, God bless you guys.
Thank you.
Chief, and uh, uh, the mayor unfortunately couldn't be here, she's doing her civic duty, uh, she's in jury duty and hasn't been able to uh, uh, finish. Uh, so she sends you, she uh, thanks you for your service, and uh, you wish you would have been here to tell you in person.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and again, it's just an honor to be, you know, part of Miami Springs, so thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna go to uh, item 4C, and the Beth Goldstein's art students.
They're on their way up.
They're on the way up?
Yes.
Okay, so. Give them a couple minutes, I guess.
Anything for open forum.
We can go, I guess when we wait, can we go to open forum?
Um, yeah, they were just coming up.
Oh, they weren't, okay.
Yeah.
No problem. There they are.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Ms. Goldstein, I'm from Miami Springs Senior High School, and this is one of the young ladies that their, her work is on display. Her name is Isara. We, this project that you're seeing, this is, I'm all about repurposing as much as I possibly can. So I present them a lot of times with literally just some cardboard and say, "What can you do with this cardboard?" How can, so we'll learn about relief, which is a raised sculpture. And then I just literally hand them a sheet or a box and a cutter and say, "Sketch it out and go." So everything you're seeing downstairs, that is not somebody else's preconceived idea, that's somebody, they just grabbed it and they took it, and I appreciate, again, the opportunity to show all the things, like, this is a ninth grader that is NAP, so she's a college-level student in high school, ninth grade, due to her amazing skill sets. And I thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goldstein, appreciate it. All right, we have anybody for open forum?
No, sir, no one has signed up.
So we're, move on to number 6A.
Um. We wanted to move up 12.
Yes, we did, uh, we're gonna move, uh, item 12A. So the, um, James Fulton, uh, troop leader. How you doing, buddy?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, good evening, Councilman and Councilwoman. It's my pleasure to be here today for Troop 334. Um, this is our, our annual ask for summer camp. Uh, this year, the scouts will be going to Woodruff Scout Camp up in, uh, near the Atlanta, uh, Georgia area. And um, they have a lot of great things planned, they're gonna be doing a whitewater trip and also be taking merit badge classes like horsemanship, uh, shooting, and skeet shooting. The adults, while the scouts are in their merit badge classes, the adults are also gonna be taking merit badge classes, um, are not merit badge classes, but instructions, there's um, gonna be specific training for committee members. All of our adults who are involved in the troop, who are not either assistant scoutmasters or other positions, quartermaster, et cetera, are on the committee. Um, we have a committee chair, we have a treasurer, we have a secretary, um, et cetera. So then there's also a class for them called Introduction to Outdoor Skills, or I O L S, Building High Adventure Program in Your Troop, and there's a backcountry chief course that these adults will be taking while they're up there. I brought some of my scouts with me, uh, tonight, and um, so uh, city manager, uh, William Alonso usually puts in a request for us for around $500 to help offset the expenses. Uh, we always go outside of the state, uh, just to get away from the mosquitoes and the alligators. Um, and uh, so we always try to go up north, which causes, we have transportation, usually one night stay on the way up, one night stay on the way back, and then the breakfast and lunch in between getting to camp and coming back to Miami Springs. Um, so I'd like to request, uh, uh, the summer camp help for the scouts this year, um, that would be amazing.
Thank you, Mr. Fulton, uh, thank you for all the work you do, I've been,
Thank you.
I was fortunate to go to a couple of events during the, uh, the election tour, and uh, it was a pleasure to see the, no doubt about it, the future of Miami Springs and the country. So we're more than thankful to have you guys as part of this, uh, community, and I think, uh, our support is more than evident, uh, tonight, you'll see.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Vice Mayor. Hey, guy, I'd like to motion that we, that the council provided, approve $500 for the summer camp.
Second.
Call. All right.
Um, roll call, uh, Councilman Bravo? Yes. Councilman Bahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Santin?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Have fun.
Just a quick question.
I have a second.
How many scouts are going, uh, this year?
We have 11, 13 scouts going. Our, our two new crossovers that crossed over in March are also going, um, and their moms are going, are going as well. Um, so they'll be doing outdoor, uh, leadership training as well. Um, on a second note, we have, um, our scout who is doing the appreciation, first responders appreciation plaque here in the, it, out front of City Hall, and I wanted to show you a rendering of the, um, of the actual plaque. So I have, I brought a couple copies, we can share them.
We can pass.
So, my second ask is, if possible, if the city could.
Could you hold on a second?
Yes.
Future. Just wanted to ask, where exactly is the plaque going to be?
It's gonna be, if you were to walk right out the front door?
Yes.
To the median, there's, if I'm facing the median, there's an oak tree right here, right underneath that oak tree, it's gonna be, and it's gonna face the sidewalk in the center of the, of the median. Um, so in pricing out the plaque, uh, my second ask is, the plaque itself, just the, just the bronze plaque is about $3,000. Um, if we could have the city talk about, discuss, um, a possible donation towards that as well. The scout himself has sent out donation request letters, started a GoFundMe, et cetera. Our original budget complete was 2,500, um, but due to the expense after COVID and um, the, the cost of metal going up, the, the plaque itself alone is, is in the neighborhood of 3,000.
Um, what's your price, total cost now for the whole project?
So total cost, 33, 3,400, we're getting, we're getting the cinder block, we're getting the granite top that the, that the, um, plaque is gonna be mounted on, is all being donated. Um, so basically, we're out rebar cement and some mortar to put the cinder block together that he has been able to secure as donations to the project. So, um, he's done a very good job. As a matter of fact, we're going on Friday to go and try to find a unique stone to put around the base of the plaque to cover these regular cinder block.
Yeah.
In order to dress it up real nice. So, that is, that is the ask, gentlemen and ladies.
What's the total ask?
I'm sorry?
What was the ask that?
The, the ask is for a donation from the city, um, towards, towards the plaque, the purchase of the plaque, the actual bronze plaque.
Did you have a specific?
I do not, I wanna leave it up to the, to the council and, and the, and the Vice Mayor and.
Who did you use to get a quote for that plaque? The company we gave you?
Artistic Bronze. Okay. So he was the most, he was the cheapest? Okay.
To, to the chair, what, do you know what the turnaround time is from process, like, to order? Is it a long time?
So the project, the projected date of the project, which ties into, uh, the Police Department, the Fire Department, and some local physicians, is May 20th. The backup date for that is gonna be June, June 10th. Unfortunately, plaques of that size, that's a 36 by 24 plaque, um, are taking six to eight weeks. So the plaque itself may not be ready for the unveiling and for the, um, event that we're gonna hold on Park Street, um, on either of those two Saturdays. But Mark from Artistic Bronze is gonna send me some artwork if we have to use it on foam board and put up there just for the unveiling. We don't wanna do that, but the foundry is what's holding everything up, and they're basically six to eight weeks. Um, this young man is, is trying to earn his Eagle Scout before he goes to the National Jamboree, um, which is at the end of July of this summer, and, uh, we're gonna be spending a week and a half up at the summit in West Virginia. So the goal is to try to get him to have earned his Eagle Scout prior to that, so he can wear his Eagle badge.
What do you have raised so far for the project?
So far, the, we have raised 1,200.
Sure. And a question, um, um, William, I know that we had, uh, decided, I think, a year or two ago that we would set aside some funds for this kind of.
We, we set aside $5,000
Okay.
to be distributed to different civic groups that come during the year.
Right, right.
And that's where the 500 for the summer camp will go.
Okay, okay.
So, right now, I think we've only used 500 of it, and now another 500, so we're probably down to about 4,000.
Okay.
But you may have other groups between now and September 30th that may come.
I'd like to make a motion that we contribute $300 to this.
To the chair, I'd like to make it 500.
I'll see your 500 and.
Do I have a second?
That help you, William?
I'll sec, I'll second that.
100% I would, I really appreciate.
Is this your project?
This, this is the life scout who's doing the project for the city.
My husband's an Eagle Scout, I gotta support this.
Well, so is my son.
He's watching me, he's only.
I, I, I second it.
Do we make it an even 1,000?
That would be amazing.
500 and 500.
That would be amazing.
For the summer, for the summer camp donation and 500.
Thank you, thank you.
And as you know, the scout project is incredible, and my son went through it, and we've helped so many others do this, but it's also a permanent project for the city. You're all familiar with the, uh, fire pit by the War Memorial, where we retire flags. Um, you know, these are projects that, and in this case, uh, first responders, of course, and it'll be here for a very long time, so.
So, go for vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, make sure you call Victor to help mix them in.
For sure, for sure.
Councilman Bravo? Yes. Councilman Bahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Santin?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I really appreciate all the support that I get from City Council and from the Mayor's Office, Vice Mayor, uh, and also Mr. Alonso, I've worked closely with him for years, and, uh, I really appreciate it. It really means a lot that, you know, I, I, I try to mentor these young men, and it means a lot that you all see that and that you appreciate it.
I see that there's a lifetime, um, experiences and friendships that will last forever in this group, so it's important to, to keep that culture going, because it's really hard to make friends and.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Before you step down, um, I just want everyone to know, congratulations are in order. Um, um, James's son, Jack, just graduated from boot camp, Marine boot camp.
On Friday, we picked him up on Friday, he's an Eagle Scout as well from 334.
As well.
And he came up with, uh, with Councilman Vasquez's son, and so, uh, they're, they're two of my number of Eagle Scouts from 334, but, uh, he, so I'm very proud of him. He just graduated on Friday, uh, and we were in Paris Island, South Carolina, and drove back on Saturday, so.
Cool.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Hi, James.
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Don't forget Rotary in two weeks. All right, um, okay, so we're gonna move to, uh, item 6A, approval council meetings, minutes, April 24th, 2023?
Vice Mayor, motion to, uh, move to approve Council minutes of April 24th?
I'll second that. Councilwoman Bravo? Yes. Councilman Bahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Santin?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Yeah, we're almost towards the end.
Any reports in commission?
Mentor reports.
No, I thought it's Omar, but, okay, all good. All right, so, uh, anybody here for public hearing? None either as well, so we're, move to item 9A, resolution.
Um, this would be the consent agenda, if any council member would like to pull an item, or otherwise they can approve the consent agenda as is.
To the chair, motion to approve, uh, items 9A, B, C, and D.
Second.
Call.
Councilwoman Bravo?
I'd like to pull item 9D, and I'm okay with A, B, and C.
All right, amend the motion. Approval of 9A, B, and C?
Second.
Okay. Councilman Bravo?
Okay, so it says here.
We're voting, we're voting on A through C.
Uh, doing roll call for the consent, uh, items nine?
Yes.
Through C. Okay, uh, Councilman Bahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Santin?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, um, for 9D, I just wanna see if I can get a little bit of clarification of what, I haven't been able to read this part of the agenda, if you can give me just a quick, quick wraparound on.
Is that on the roofing?
Yes.
So at the country club, we replaced several roofs, um, including the one above, directly above the pro shop, and as well as the maintenance barn in the rear of the property. and as well as the maintenance barn in the rear of the property and the barn, which also holds the chemicals. The one that holds the chemicals in it that Lori uses for the entire, uh, golf horse, uh, golf course facility, um, that roof was severely, uh, deteriorated, the wood was rotten. So they had to remove more than anticipated. And that's typical when you, when you unveil the layer of roof, roofing material. So, um, they had to replace that. And Ulysses was there to, our building official was there to verify the section that had to be removed and he agreed and he was there to make sure that it was. Okay. Really installed.
This was, this was done, uh, with the, uh, ARPA money that we received last year. You already approved, uh, seventy-nine thousand, twenty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents for all of the roof work. Uh, this is just adding another five thousand, two ninety-three in additional work that was needed once the roof, uh, came off and that, so, so the total project instead of seventy-nine is gonna be about eighty-four thousand.
You said Ulysses was there? Yeah. The amount of wood, I know wood is pretty expensive nowadays, it's gone down a little bit, but.
Do you, sorry, to the chair, do you think we can get, um, I don't know if it'd be Public Works or, or somebody else in the city that can do a comprehensive inspection on the whole building? Namaskilles attack me. An inspection on the country club property to see what other items should be perhaps repaired or. Requesting an inspection above and beyond like the forty, fifty, and sixty-year recertifications? Because those are done. They, okay, so I guess you can give me a copy of that. Sure. The last one, okay, perfect, thank you.
Bring it back up? Call.
Okay, so motion through the chair, if you don't mind, motion to approve, uh, nine D.
Second.
The Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Bahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Santin?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, great. All right, so, um, we're gonna go to old business, item ten, discussion of years, Fourth of July parade route. Omar?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Um, at the last meeting, I know that, uh, mayor wanted me to kinda go back and take a look at different options for the parade, which, um, we did, we looked at several different options, uh, see where they would, if they could work or not. Uh, logistically, some of them create some issues for us. Uh, the biggest thing being the water zone. Where can we create a water zone area safely for our Fourth of July patrons to still go out there, have a water zone where we won't have any incidents or try not to have any incident? So after looking at various options of either going down westward, going around the circle, coming back down westward, uh, we felt the median right here by, by, uh, the downtown area wasn't wide enough. Uh, if we, even if we took off from the community center, we felt that then you would have two water zones, cause you'd have one coming down and then when they make the U-turn and go back, you have another water zone, which creates more liability and issues for the police. So we, myself and Caitlin looked for different ways to do it, but we felt that the safest and easiest way for us was to continue the way we've done it in, in previous years. Now, the, the issue and the concern was, uh, obviously the golf course, right? So the plan is, if you see the little kinda map that Denise did for us, which is the last page or, or this page. If you guys have that, um, so we would go down Curtis Parkway and right before they get to where they would cross Deer Run to go to the golf course, we were gonna put some cones that would make them make that immediate right-hand turn, right? At this point in time, Public Works and, and the golf course already have put the snow fence area, which will protect the course. We were gonna add an additional barrier of barricades and then those cones would just go all the way down Deer Run, kinda how we do for the food drive. So, and we would make, uh, our, our Fourth of July patrons sign, the, they already signed the, the, the waiver for the event that stipulates that have to go down Deer Run, we'll have staff there to coordinate them and then they'll go all the way down to either Esperonad or Albert Tross and then they're gone. Uh, so we're, we completely don't want them anywhere near the golf course, we understand the concern. So they'll go from there and then they're out. This will keep us with a water zone, okay? Uh, we do know that from, I guess you could say like from Deer Run north on Curtis Parkway, sometimes we allow people to almost set up right in that area. We're gonna go about fifty, sixty feet away from that and we're gonna put barriers there where they're not almost, you know, they're not gonna basically tailgate right on top of Deer Run. So, and then we'll still have the water zone area. Uh, if you're not, don't wanna be part of the water zone, you'll still get off on Azure Way where Grace Luther, uh, yeah, graces. And then they'll go from there and then they're gone. So we wanna keep the same route because it allows us to go down westward where people don't have a wet zone, everybody enjoys the parade and then you have the wet zone at the end and then they're gone. So that's kinda the route that we're hoping gets approved.
Erica, I'm sorry, through the chair, do you have a copy of the map that Omar is looking at?
Yes, it's in, it's part of your package, um, it should be page forty-six of the, of the agenda.
You were saying that you had, uh, thought about coming back, cause we used to do it back at the rec, rec center.
Well, we used to go from rec center to the golf course. And then we, we, we looked at every possible, not every, I mean, there's a million ways to do it, but the ones that could make sense. But the one issue we had with going around the circle, which is something me and Caitlin have always thought about doing, is one, traffic closing down the circle, uh, which would, I'd have to get with police and see if that's, that's a possibility or not. Uh, and then the wet zone, right now the wet zone is one way, right? So like, for example, we thought about now, instead of making the right onto your run, making a left and coming back down Curtis, but those kids are gonna run across the median and they're gonna create another wet zone just on the other side. Whether we try to control it or not, you can't control a hundred little kids, I mean, it's just be honest, it's, you guys have been there, it's pretty intense.
Yeah.
Uh, so, so we're trying to avoid where I have kids on one side of the median and now we're turning a loop going back and they're just gonna create additional madness, which we already know that's a, the, the water zone, it is what it is. I think where it's at right now is the easiest way to control it.
I was just trying to get away from the golf course the most we can, but I guess.
The way me and Caitlin walked it, I could almost, I'm gonna assure you a hundred percent, no one's gonna get near that golf.
Yeah, and that's what I was gonna mention, Omar, is that the golf course is gonna be secured all, the entire day, right? There's nothing you could do about people coming from the south from, you know, people are gonna come to our events and they're gonna be descending upon, upon the golf course. And, uh, it was kind of written about like why so many people, like it, it's gonna take a lot of manpower to secure it. So it's already gonna be secured. I think that the idea of just having, stopping everything about fifteen feet short of Deer Run and then just having cones and it's just the only way out is to Esperonad and go. And you can't stop, so.
We're putting the cones all the way down.
And then, and then at the end of the parade, if you have a little bit more staff there also, like, but the, I trust that the golf course is gonna be secured from all angles, from people coming from VG, from south on Thirty-Sixth Street. Uh, people are gonna wanna park like you're, that, that was part of the reason we decided not to do the fireworks is that, that's a huge job keeping people away, you know, from those areas that can't get trampled on. So I, I think that it, it, it's basically the same route, but just with some adjustments and just keeping the traffic flow going rather than having it just like end there, just keep it going and, and, and then, you know, the police will do their thing and then our staff will do, do our thing and I, I, I think it's a good plan.
Through the chair, chief, any thoughts, additional thoughts on this? Okay, okay, okay. I mean, I think, I, I, I think it's a very feasible way of doing it for sure and I, and I understand people gonna come down into Miami Springs from Thirty-Sixth Street, they're gonna come down. But, uh, we, we're, we're trying to keep people off that, off that turf that, uh, the folks are working on, so.
Well, you guys have thought about it and everything, so, I mean, I honestly still like to have stayed away from there and done the water as far away as we can from the golf course, uh, so, uh, you guys have let the council decide.
So the red arrows are where the, the water is going to.
No, 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 the, the, the red arrows are vehicles getting out, correct? The water zone is from, you could say like Pine Crest, Morningside to Azure Way.
Okay, and we can't use Curtis Parkway at all, like the whole?
We do use Curtis going, going southbound.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're on Curtis going southbound.
I, I think we'll be fine.
I mean, the, the, the reality is that the, the biggest issue when me and Caitlin walked it was obviously getting vehicles to just go and go right, get, get out, don't go across, right? So then the night before, we were gonna barricade like where the pump house is, we're gonna barricade all of that the night before, so no one even goes in tailgates. Uh, we were gonna put like caution tape, all that stuff and then, you know, we would barricade the areas and we're just gonna basically, honestly, the food drive experience we have has helped us with this, cause we're gonna put bodies and they're gonna be like, go this way, go this way. Then we're gonna have bodies along with cones, just keep directing traffic and then we're gonna direct them right to Esperonad and they're gone. Or they can go down Deer Run and just keep going, but we're, and we're gonna have bodies there, we understand the severity of the golf course, we get it.
You're not, are you gonna block off the end of Deer Run towards the hotels or no? Are you gonna leave that open?
No, the Deer Run, no, once, they're gonna, right where Deer Run is, the cones, they're gonna have to make, if you're in the parade, you gotta make a right. You cannot make a left, you gotta go right.
Yeah.
We're forcing you to go right and then once the parade ends, we'll open the road back up.
Okay, but are we gonna restrict traffic coming in through Deer Run, like from Thirty-Sixth Street? Will that be blocked off?
In years past, we have not done that, no.
You, you don't think that would help? No? I'm asking you if it would help to, to alleviate traffic coming in from Thirty-Sixth Street on Deer Run?
Yeah, historically, it hasn't been an issue.
Okay.
I don't think it's gonna be a problem.
Just wanna make it easier for you guys, whatever, I trust, but I'm okay with the plan.
Most of the people that tailgate are residents.
Right.
The ones who bring their cars that morning and they, you know, they leave them there at, at six o'clock in the morning, like I've seen them, is mostly residents. So we, we're hoping that with marketing, publication, things like that, we get the word out. And then, like I said, the night before, we're gonna basically barricade those areas off and make sure that, you know, any residents, we're, I'm, I'm gonna be up at five, six in the morning, so, and I'll be around, so.
And those people are gonna be, those people are gonna be crowding the southbound lanes of Curtis.
Correct.
Right? So if anybody crosses over to the north, they're gonna be heading north, they're gonna be heading away from the, the golf course, so.
That's even the night before, we always have our patrols in the area, so with the barricades up and us keeping an eye on it.
Yeah.
I just wanna remind council that also where we, Public Works is going to be installing that perimeter fence all the way around the course as well, so that's gonna start, uh, effectively tomorrow, um, to be installed. So we'll have all of the course.
Okay.
Well barricaded by the time the parade comes. Yes, I'll do that at the end.
Thank you, Omar.
Thank you, guys.
All right, so I guess we'll go to, uh.
Eleven A?
Eleven A. Your business, resolution?
This is a resolution of the mayor and city council, the city of Miami Springs, Florida, appointing an interim city manager effective June first, twenty twenty-three, providing for implementation, providing for an effective date.
Uh, Vice Mayor, we have two, uh, members of the public who signed up to speak on this item, uh, Ms. Neri Owens.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, council people. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I have lived in Miami Springs since nineteen fifty-eight and I'm still here, thank God. My degree is from Biscayne College, which later became Saint Thomas in public administration. And I served for thirty-two years working for the county, the state, and the school board, retiring in two thousand and one as a school board administrator in charge of records and forms management, managerial exempt. So I, when I retired in two thousand and one, I made it a priority to always come to council, always be involved in my local government because I love government and because I want you to be the very best you can be. This city is my heart next to my grandchildren. For the last eighteen, maybe nineteen years, I have observed and watched Tammy Romero work first in Public Works and to do procurement, to do more advanced procurement and I have experience in procurement and RFPs and RFQs and all of that. And she did an excellent job. Of that last eighteen years, the last eight, she's been in the city manager's office and she has done an impeccable job. She's excellent, she's very thorough and she knows what she's doing. She's learned under William for eight years of tutorial work. So in my opinion, and I think I'm kind of an expert about government, cause I really have stayed involved all my life. She is the very best candidate we could be for interim and I hope that does not keep her from applying for the final city manager replacement. Cause this city deserves the best and I can't think of another person better than Tammy Romero. Even though some other managers may be in other municipalities, they can't compare to her experience in this community with all of our problems and she's always informed. So thank you very much, please consider her.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Michael Gavilla.
Michael Gavilla, I'm also here to support Tammy and let me tell you, I think she would be the best choice ever.
Present, present company excluded?
Okay.
To the chair. Well, I'd like to appoint Tammy Romero as interim manager.
Second. Call for vote.
Can, can there be some discussion?
Sure.
Of course, okay, so, um, I feel that we, and I don't know to what extent you guys have had an opportunity to talk to the people that are running our search. Um, the timeline is to have a, uh, a city manager in place in six weeks. Uh, my understanding is that applications, we're taking applications till the fifteenth. There's already, uh, they've already been processing and interviewing people. We're gonna be given a shortlist and then there's a whole, uh, a whole bunch of things that are gonna happen where, where, we're gonna get a, a shortlist of people, about six or so, and then we're gonna distill it down to about two or three and then those people are going to come down. They're gonna meet with the different departments, there's gonna be a town hall, there's gonna be all kinds of things that we're gonna do with those final, uh, couple of candidates. What my concern that I'll voice again, that I voiced early on, uh, independent of the qualifications of Tammy Romero to be, uh, to be interim or even city manager. And I'm, I'm glad that she applied for, uh, for the position of city manager. I think that, uh, for the sake of having an independent, transparent, uh, process, I think that it opens us up to people that are gonna say that there was a type of bias when you got down to the last couple of candidates because the person, when it was between a few people and assuming that Tammy, because, uh, she already has a lot of experience, um, I'm assuming that she's gonna be among those final candidates and I think that it would compromise the independence of our search if that person is already sitting in as the interim. Uh, because they would already be acting as city manager. So, um, part of the things that have been like concerns that have been brought up is that, well, she is the person who is most qualified to do it, she'd be, she's been doing it as assistant city manager. Whenever i- if the city manager is on vacation or something were to befall the city manager, the assistant city manager steps in, we're still going to have her as the assistant city manager for the next six weeks. So she would still be doing that job. Um, uh, to me, I feel that for the sake of, of, you know, not having people complain that, that our final outcome was biased because the person that we selected was already serving as the interim. I think that for six weeks, uh, that an administrator within a department head within the city could be appointed the interim. And that person would, you know, be able to talk to the different department chairs, talk to the council, perform those duties that the, uh, the city manager does and communicating to us independent of going through the search process and being, uh, a finalist, uh, candidate. I think that that's something that we could do for six weeks, I don't think that it would, uh, in any way, uh, hurt the day-to-day operations because we're still gonna have Tammy, who is very competent and who is going to be doing what Tammy does right now when she has to step in because the city manager is not available.
To the chair, so what I'm understanding is that if we don't appoint a city manager right now, we can operate with Tammy just assisting us in the capacity. Tammy just assisting us in the capacity of assistant city manager, don't we need a standing?
We can have an interim city manager, right? But that person would have the assistant city manager doing the duties that the assistant city manager does now.
Well, I mean, there's no difference than Alonso doing finance director and city manager, I think from a perspective. That the time concerning, I sympathize with you there, but I don't think I'd open it up for an expense to look for an interim city manager. Well, because you, wouldn't you wanna? Who, who would we put as a, a city manager?
Uh, we could pick a director from, from the city.
Yeah, I mean, as coming from corporate world, I think by protocol, I mean, we have a city manager for a reason. And I don't think it's gonna put her at an advantage, I mean, if we're gonna look at that, she's already at an advantage, she's been working with William for a long time. I just think I'm looking at the, the easiest process maybe to just fill in so we can move on. Um, that's what you're saying, absolutely, but I don't think, I don't think it's gonna harm us. In that sense of, of that, the bias.
I, I, I understand. Uh, councilman, uh, if I had some concerns and, and, and they, they have a, a certain validity to them. And I, look. Nothing is guaranteed here, right? We're going, we're going through a process and we're gonna be rigorous about the process. And, and I'm pleased to hear that we have uh, a number of people that have applied and I'm trusting that process, we hired. A professional to, to bring that to us and that, that they are doing their due diligence. To get us the absolute best candidates for the position. But I don't think it's, and having been in, in a number of. Positions in institutions of public higher education. Where um. A, a, an administrator and a manager uh was going to be replaced, someone who'd been in the position for a while. Um, i- it wasn't unusual for us to um, ask the. Deputy Director, Deputy Manager uh to step in and actually do two jobs at once. Because we're not even talking about bringing someone in if, if Tammy's asked to do this. Um, interim position to, we're not looking to bring someone in to do her position, she's gonna be doing. Two jobs, which is already a lot to ask. But I'm confident in her abilities to be able to do that, especially, we're talking about six weeks, it might be more, might be a little bit more because we don't know. At the end of the day, how these processes ends, I've seen, and I hope it doesn't happen. Processes where uh, you know, we can't agree. And so you start a search, oh, God forbid, right? Um, but um, uh, you know, I'm, I'm confident, I, I don't believe, and I've seen this, and, and as I said. At least a half a dozen times, maybe more, that it's tainted the process. Um, I can tell you, I can think of, I'm not gonna mention any names, but I'm thinking of a couple of different positions that I participated in. Where the uh interim person did not get the position. And a couple of situations where the interim person did get the position, and it was all fleshed out uh in public. The way we are planning to do this, so um, you know, that's my thinking on it. I think that would uh, would make sense for us, continue the, the operation of. Uh, you know, rather than to ask another director to step in from the work that they're doing, to do this for, you know, six, eight weeks. Um, I just think it uh, it, 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 that might be a little bit disruptive. Uh, and, and I'd rather not see any disruption in that regards. Uh, and I have a lot of regard for, for councilmen. And, and I understand uh, the concerns that there may be something here on the hand going on, I don't believe. That is going on, I don't think anyone here believes that. But, you know, people out there are gonna think whatever they think, I mean, we're, as long as we are um, clear about processes. I think that should be good enough.
I, and so, through the chair, uh, you're a university guy. When you do research, you control for factors so that when you get results and outcomes. People can't question, you mentioned validity. And you do that by being very transparent and saying, this is our process, and at the end, when I make my decision, hey. My process from the very beginning was transparent, and I tried to control for factors that people could use to say. Hey, the, the, are you sure there wasn't some bias in these results that you're getting? All I'm saying is that part of the process is that the final couple of candidates have to go interview. You, you're talking about whether an interim did in the past or did not. For this position, to be the city manager. Part of the process for the last couple of candidates is to go and interview, so I'm a department chair. I'm going to interview my boss to see if they will be my boss, like I, to, to me, that. Uh, I feel opens us up to a little bit of like, well, like, I just feel like that compromises some. Do I think that we're gonna do the right thing? Yes. Do I think that Tammy is qualified? That's not even, like, that's, that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about setting a process. And I'm going to advocate for that process to be transparent and as, as outwardly, you know. The independent as possible, thinking ahead, okay, I don't, what we're asking, what I am proposing is not something that is foreign. It happens in municipalities all the time, they ask for, there are, there are. Uh, department chairs who are not interested in being a city manager. I'm sure who would be willing to step in and serve as the interim to be able to aid communication. And then talk to, to Tammy, and Tammy would do a wonderful job as, as the ACM continuing, because if she's the interim, then she's gonna be the interim and the ACM. I'm just saying that for the benefit of, of Tammy, for the benefit of the process. My opinion is that we should try now while we're in the middle of deciding what the process is going to be. Okay, not just appointing someone that then is going to be applying for that job and, and as part of the process. Having to interview with directors who that should, that person is their direct report, like that. That is something that confounds and that compromises and that opens us up for people saying like, hey, wait a minute. So, we don't have to do that. At the end of the day, when we break the huddle, I'm, whatever the play was that was called, I'm running it a hundred percent, I got everybody's back. I'm just telling, what I believe, okay, is that we should think about down the line, hey. What is this gonna look like? And then is, does it open us up to critique, okay? I, I'm, I'm, I'm well aware that she is very qualified to do, yes.
Okay, so. Let's, let's, let's play this out for a sec. I, I understand what you're saying. So, and, and I don't know if she's applying for the position, you mentioned, I don't know, I, I haven't talked to anybody, but, but let's, let's suppose.
I would encourage everybody on the council to talk to the Mercer Group. And to talk to the people who are already running the search.
To do that, I haven't, I have not done that. Um, I didn't know what was proper to do at this moment, but I'm glad that you clarified that. Well, I mean, I will do that, so let's say she is one of the final candidates, she's gonna be interviewed by those department heads who she knows, right? I don't see how that uh changes um, the equation. And, and I'm with you on, you know, on, on trying to be as transparent as possible, but that's, that's, that's all I wanna say about that.
To the chair. I just, um, we're going in a hamster wheel here, and at the end of the day, the council's the one that selects the city managers, and she still has to apply for the job, so. She doesn't know what she's up against, you know, maybe there's a resume that it's uh, five stars and hers is four. Um, I just don't wanna, you know, if I have to draft another department head and take them away from their daily duties, I, 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 I find that a little bit. I'm gonna create a deficit over here and then she's gonna have to waste her time doing the runaround and, and informing them of what they have to do when she. That's kind of counterproductive. I totally agree with you in the sense of you wanna make sure that it's clear and there's no conflict of interest and she doesn't have the set goal, but she really doesn't. As a matter of fact, I see it as a time for her to step up to the pedal, see how much, you know, maybe she's good, maybe she's not, but at the end of the day. We're gonna see resumes, and it's for us to decide, she's not gonna hire herself, we, we're gonna hire the city manager. I just think, uh, I'm looking at this at a point of a. Productivity moving forward instead of being counterproductive, because to find somebody, I'm not gonna pull somebody else out of the department, because they're not, they haven't been doing this. And I think, you know. Just to just kinda, I, I get you, I get you, and I'm actually, I was number one and opening it up to look for city managers, so I'm not against that at all, but. When it comes to thing, I think this is just proper protocol, and that's why we have assistant managers, like. I have, we have chiefs signing off on uh, was it the, the reports, the financial reports? And that's a customary thing, and we use it when we need to use them, it's by protocol, so I think in this sense it's like a protocol call. But I think we, i- i- it's a balanced approach, and if anybody wants to comment, they could comment it, but at the end of the day, there's a city chairman, and I'm not gonna look for somebody else or pull somebody else to. You know. But you have a good point, but I don't think we're gonna.
It was a valid point. Definitely got me thinking, was for trans, you know, transparency, I think it's important. Um, and if, if there was more, i- i- if it didn't all come down back to the council being the one to uh, to um, to decide. I would say that uh, that would be more uh, of a point to, to, to consider. But since it's not, Buck's gonna stop here, I feel I'm gonna make the best decision, it's the best for this community, and I'm not gonna be lured. I'm gonna hear out the different department heads, so obviously that does have an effect to a certain extent, and ultimately, I'm still gonna put the most qualified person. For this community in front of me, so um, for that, I think it's best, just for the transition, that Tammy would continue. And go to as a city manager.
Mr. Vice Mayor, good evening, this is Heidi. Um, I just wanted to add before um, council takes a vote. Um, the item that's before you, you have a resolution appointing. It leaves it blank, we'll update it once you make the vote. Um, appointing an interim city manager, and that would take effect June first. For the record, I wanna clarify that there is a letter, an offer letter, it's very straightforward, it's attached to the resolution. And it provides the terms of this person's employment. Um, the, the effect is basically whoever is appointed, uh, the letter assumes that they are a city employee. It assumes that if they are not uh, selected as manager, they would return to their current position. So whatever position they have as of this date, they would return to that position. And their benefits during the time that they are interim manager would remain the same as they are now. The only difference, and this was um. At the recommendation of, of Mr. Alonso. That the person appointed as interim be, their salary be adjusted for the timeframe that they serve as interim manager. And I believe the number that we put in is a hundred and fifty thousand for their compensation during that period. Um, other than that, the letter is straightforward. The resolution that you would be adopting tonight would authorize the mayor to execute this letter on behalf of the city. Um, and then it would be executed by whomever you appoint.
Presented by Councilwoman Bravo, seconded by uh, Councilman Vasquez. Councilman Bravo?
Um. I'm gonna, I need to clarify one more thing on this resolution. So it would revert, the compensation would revert back to assistant city manager once her interim position is completed?
Assuming, yes, assuming that uh, Ms. Romero is appointed this evening, if she is not selected as the. Permanent city manager, she would go back to her position as acting, I'm sorry, as assistant city manager. And she would go back to her salary of whatever it is today.
I mean, it's, it's a six-week probation, basically, it's okay, yes.
Okay, uh, Councilman Fahet?
Just, just to be, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just to clarify. Um, and I think uh, Councilman Fahet made this point during his remarks. It's, the letter doesn't say for how long she will serve as interim, it's until. You have your, your permanent manager selected, and that's obviously within the council's control. But I just don't want there to be an assumption that it's gonna be for a definitive time period.
Heidi, to the chair, so what is the increase from, I mean, what is the, the financial impact from bumping her up? To this salary as interim?
I defer to William on that.
Right, she currently makes one twenty? One twenty, so she will go to one fifty for the period of time that she serves. So it's thirty thousand dollars, but remember that. You won't have a city manager, so you're gonna have a savings in salaries anyway.
No, I know, but that doesn't mean that we wanna increase it to our max, you understand, so I'm okay with the resolution, but I probably wanna amend the, the compensation.
Well, the reason I went to the one fifty is that that's what we had to pay the finance director. That we just hired. Uh, so I wanted to keep a level of salaries so that, you know, as, as interim city manager, she would be at least at the same level. As the finance director.
Keep in mind as well that this would be effective June first. And you could, uh, my understanding is, is that resumes close May fifteenth for the search process. Um, and I'm sure William can, I, I think he's providing an update on the process this evening, um. So your June meeting, your first June meeting is June twelfth, I don't know if. The Mercer Group or the council will be ready to make a, a selection at that point. But you could conceivably have an interim manager for a very short period of time. Or as uh, Councilman Vasquez alluded to, it could be for a very long period of time. But ultimately, that's within your control.
Well, since we're talking about, okay, I'll give you the update now, I mean, as of last Friday. They had received fourteen applications and she had narrowed down to four. That uh, she would be recommending, that's as of last Friday. But in the timeline that she provided me, uh, she's looking around. June twenty-first, June twenty-second. To um, to have a special meeting, I guess, to um, go through the process, she, she's got a. A schedule here of Tuesday, June twentieth, and Wednesday, June twenty-first. Um, candidates one-on-one interviews with uh, elected officials, and then that night have a special meeting. Where council would interview again in public those individuals and make the decision. Now, I also remember that although it's June twenty-first, what's hap, what, if Tammy is not the one that's selected. And you're selecting someone from the outside, they probably won't be able to start until sometime in July. Depending on where they come from, or if they have a current job that they have to resign from and all that, uh, they're gonna require some time, so I don't. If it's not Tammy, I don't see anyone new coming in here before July, sometime in July.
And we would need to negotiate whoever that person's contract is, what, whether it's Tammy or anyone else.
I, I just wanna get a clarification here. Um, and, 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 and I'm gonna ask you as well, counselor. We, we're in the middle of a vote here. I, I appreciate uh, Councilwoman Bravo's concern, but we were in the middle of a vote.
To the chair, I'd like to amend the vote.
The maker of the motion can't vote against the motion they, they made.
No, she can withdraw the motion.
I, I wanted to amend because I wanna continue with the appointment, I would like to adjust the annual compensation.
Do you wanna make a motion to appoint and then separately take up compensation?
Yeah, yes, I wanna be fair. But I wanna give a, you know, a suggestion, and if anybody here has something else to say, please. Um, cause I do respect Tammy, I understand that she's gonna take on this role. I do know that Alonso did do this role for a very long time, doing dual positions, I know that you're coming into something that you already know. So um, I don't. I don't think it's gonna be that much of a big difference, I do want you to serve in the role, so I'd like to uh, make a motion to appoint. Tammy as an interim city manager with an annual salary of a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Can I, can I just?
Can I discuss?
Let me just say something.
You gotta get a second.
When, when you're looking at a hundred and fifty thousand, that's a difference of thirty thousand dollars. If she remains interim for six weeks, let's say. That represents thirty-four-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars.
Through, through the chair, I, I thought the argument was we should have the most qualified people, you can't have the city manager making less than your finance director. I, I, the very fact that we're paying her a hundred fifty is even with the finance director, like if, if we're gonna do. If the thinking is that we're gonna put the best person in place and that person needs to be compensated commensurate with. The job that that person's gonna be doing, I, I think that one fifty is too low, I, I definitely don't think we need to be going down.
So we have to cap the salaries to confirm that somebody is good, I mean, she's just serving as the interim.
Oh, sir. Yeah, but that's the.
Sorry, not just serving, she's serving as the interim. I, I appointed her, I want her to serve, I just didn't think that we would, we would just be maxing out. I I appointed her, I want her to serve, I just didn't think that we would would just be maxing out. So for example, I understand that we made these changes and we approved these salary schedules. And now we've hired as a finance director at a hundred and fifty thousand, what happens a year after that? Is he gonna wanna raise, we've already capped that salary schedule, so there's no room for 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 motivation, they're gonna just simply say, well, if I can't get a raise, I'm gonna go.
Through the chair, if I may, there's a motion on the floor. Appointing the uh as interim city manager, Tammy Romero, with a cap on the salary at a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars per year.
Is there a second?
Even for discussion?
There is no second, I I I. Again, I I don't think that under any circumstances, the 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 interim is gonna be serving as the city manager. Uh, and 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 we're not even, and that means that they're not gonna be the assistant city manager. So you're kind of doing both jobs in one, under no circumstances, this is the city manager, I think even be paid the same. As as any director under them, and I don't think that that's fair, and I definitely don't think it should be a hundred and thirty-five. We're tied, this is gonna be, uh, we're gonna get through this process and and it's gonna be thorough, but I don't think it's gonna be that long. And I don't think that there's a problem with paying uh paying that position the way, uh, you know, commensurate with with the importance of it.
To the chair, but you just voted no?
I voted no because I didn't feel that we should be appointing Tammy because I think that it compromises the independence, not because I think that Tammy is a bad person. Or that I don't, I I think that the position warrants the compensation.
Okay, um, to the chair, I just wanna make sense of numbers because. If Tammy ends up being a city manager, I'm not saying we're gonna keep her at that, there can be verbiage there. Should she default as the actual sitting city manager, we can go ahead and give her the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Excuse me, but the job is being advertised right now between one seventy-five and one ninety-five.
Yes, that's a different ballgame.
But, okay, I appoint Tammy as a city manager, as a interim city manager. I'm just.
A motion to? You motioned to. Are you motioning?
Motioning to appoint Tammy as the interim city manager.
As as written in the.
I mean, I'm, I can't waste time, if you guys wanna go with this, then yes, I mean, we're we're not gonna entertain another amount, then then yes.
So your motion is to adopt the resolution as stated, which is at the hundred and fifty station with with Tammy Romero appointed as interim. Is there a second?
Yes, gentlemen.
Councilwoman Bravo? Councilman Fahad? Councilman Vasquez? Vice Mayor Santin? The motion carries.
All right, so move to uh. Twelve B, request by Councilman Vasquez to discuss alternative funding for police presence in local and the hotels located at thirty-sixth street.
Uh, good evening, everyone, um, this is a matter that has, we've been talking about over the last. I would say about three years, uh, at at least in my mind, since the first time I heard. That um that we had an issue with uh the amount of services required. From the Miami Springs Police Department, calls to the uh, the hotels on thirty-sixth street. And when we say thirty-sixth street, do we include the uh?
Abraham track.
Abraham track, so you know, so we're we're, I just wanna make sure.
And uh fair fairway.
And the fairway, so, a- and 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 the situation as I understand it is this. Number one, all hotels in the city or in the county pay what's called a bed a bed tax. Based on occupancy and so forth, uh, which is into the millions of dollars uh for the county. Number two, um, I believe Miami Springs among the thirty-plus. Uh, cities and townships in the county ranks number seven in the number of hotels. Uh, within our jurisdiction, I believe it's twenty-two hotels, is that correct number?
Twenty-one hotels, we 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 range uh sixth or seventh in the county in actual bed tax collection.
In actual bed tax collection. Um, and so, um, uh, number three, we've had addressed this before. In the sense that at one point, um, uh, then State Representative Brian Avila. Who is a resident of the city, uh, brought to the attention of the state legislature, put together an appropriation. To try to compensate the city, a- and and it didn't prosper because in part, the uh. Convention Bureau, that is the one that manages that money that comes into the county, uh, opposed us. But the fact of the matter is this, and this is what I have said to residents, um, and 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 it continues to be the case. Miami Springs Police Department is funded by the residents of Miami Springs. Yes, okay. And on average, on average, cause this varies from day to day. Forty percent of the calls that come in to Miami Springs Police Department. That requires sending out uh uh officers, forty percent of those calls are to these hotels. And uh, just a few weeks ago, our last meeting, I had mentioned that I talked to the chief that day on my way in. And the officers on that shift were all attending a situation in the hotels. In other words, we had to send another officer out somewhere, you know, it it it, we have limited resources. And re- and 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 a and a finite number of officers, um, and patrolmen and women. I asked the city manager, because I think this is one thing we've not touched upon, that's why I wanted to talk about this last night, is. What is the dollar impact? Of those services that we rendered to the hotels in Miami Springs, which means officers are not in the city. Right, they're out there taking care of that, whether it's two officers or more and a sergeant and so forth and so on. And today, um, William, after discussing with the with the uh with the police chief. Man said that it's about two million dollars worth of our tax dollars. Let me say that again for the record, two million dollars of our city residents' tax dollars. Go to the police, that they're they're, they go to the hotels, services that we're not getting, that's my point. And and so I think that now it becomes a matter of. How do we proceed with this with this issue, I mean, if we had two million dollars, I believe. We could hire another fifteen officers or something, maybe maybe a lesser number. The point being, we're paying for the police services of the hotels on Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street. The money that the hotels pay go to the county and to promote tourism and so forth and so on. And 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 are all of us sitting up here tonight and those of anyone listening and and for the purposes of this recording. All taxpayers of the city of Miami Springs are paying. For the police coverage of the hotels then, right, so what's wrong with this picture? And so there are a couple of interested parties here that we need to figure out how we're gonna move forward with this. Number one, it's the county, right, they're getting the bed tax. Um, and and they are adamant about any of that money being moved around, right? And they expressed that the last time, um, Representative Avila presented this in the state. And I'm gonna go find that record, because they even took out uh whole pages and in the. In the uh, in the Miami newspapers opposing this. Then we have the mayor of Miami Springs. And if you, some of you may recall that when uh Mayor Levine Caba was elected. The first city that she chose to visit was Miami Springs. And we raised this issue with her, in fact, I know I did. Specifically, we have our county commissioner, uh, Kevin Cabrera, who has been briefed on this by the mayor. Uh, and by the city manager recently, right, okay? But none of this changes the fact that we're out two million dollars a year of our tax dollars. To pay for the police. That's unfair, that's unjust in any way you wanna put it. And I think that uh we now need to, seems to me, uh, begin to craft. How we're going to address this, like I said, there are multiple interests here. As far as I'm concerned, it's the interest of residents of Miami Springs priority. Right, and 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 so, you know, I think that now we need to take this, we need to up the ante, if you will. Because we're talking about our tax dollars. And if we don't do this, how do we tell our residents, we're doing everything by them? And I can tell you, from having been out on the streets, talking and knocking on people's doors and talking to residents, very few people know about this. And more people are talking about it now, but still, um, it is, at the end of the day, ladies and gentlemen, in all fairness. To our residents, it's outrageous, it really is outrageous. And so we gotta find a way to do some kind of equitable funding. A a grant, an annual grant, uh, you know, based on monies raised uh by bed tax. We have to find an equitable way, equitable way of doing this, because it is unfair. To the residents of the city and unfair to the police, men and women. Who have to run out there to take care, most of the time, some really egregious situations. Involving handguns and all kinds of other things, um, and um, which they know they have to do because that's that's what they were hired to do. But why put them in additional harms way? But I come back to the fact that these are our tax dollars. The chair, I mean, the, I I agree with a lot of the things you say. I I would also point out that that they pay bed tax, but they also pay taxes to the city as well. Um, I think that we need to put our money where our mouth is and when budget conferences start, I think I think that we've had a track record of of giving you. Uh, you know, giving you the funding to hire more officers, uh, how how many, what what's the last? Uh, five years, how many more officers do you have than you've uh? In the last five years, you've gotten four more positions. I think that we probably need to fund more, I think that, I think property values are going up, I think that the city is getting more and more tax dollars, obviously. That bed tax, it was a shame that it didn't go to the state, I I I echo your sentiments and lamenting that 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 uh didn't go through. I think that uh then Representative, now Senator Avila gave it a good push. I think that we need to continue working with Becker and Poliakoff and and make that part of like our, you know, our our goal to see what we can do. Uh, I know that the county doesn't wanna share it, uh, but they're they're part of us, we need to respond. And I think that if we need more officers, we we need to fund more and more officers, uh, for sure. Can I ask a question to the chief, the the nuisance abatement uh ordinance? I know that when we were, when we were drafting it, you know, and it was also a lot closer to COVID and what was happening. You know, was it was even that much even more uh of a conflagration than than uh than it is now. Uh, has the nuisance abatement ordinance helped in some cases with those hotels to kind of spur owners to? Provide, you know, do a little more of the heavy lifting in terms of providing uh, providing security because we're, you know, we're serving them with notice that. Has that helped?
I can give you one example. The extended stay one-on-one fairway. When uh the Miami-Dade Police Officer Cheveria was shot and killed. The individual that was associated to the killer was at the extended stay, Miami-Dade Police came in there, they had a shooting. The very next day, uh, Miami Beach Police calls me, says we're looking for a guy wanted for an attempted murder. An armed robbery who's staying at the extended stay, the room right next door. Uh, Miami Beach Police, uh, were out there, we assisted them, arrested that individual. Uh, with the assistance of the council, we sent a very nice letter to corporate. And I immediately got a phone call from National Director of Security, came down, met with me. And one of the things they did, not only is training the staff additionally. At their expense, they put a license plate reader in their parking lot that we have access to. So if a stolen car comes through there, a car used in a felony, um, the individual whose registered owner is wanted. We get the hit right away. So that's one way it's helped, other hotels haven't met that threshold where we've been able to use the nuisance abatement. Not that I will, um, I I wanna get rid of it or anything like that, I'm glad I have that. Abatement as a tool to help us. But if I may add, there's there's several things that have changed also in the last year, a year and a half. I'll give you a perfect example, uh, just talking to some of the officers tonight on their lunch break. Um, going to the county jail, simple arrest, driving while license suspended with knowledge. Officer does the arrest form, takes him over to TGK, that officer's gone for at least two and a half, three hours. And if there's a lockdown at that jail. You can forget it, he's gone for the entire shift, what's interesting is the officers in the county have um. I don't know if it's an app, it's Telegram, I think it's called, where they've set up a chat. Where they let everybody else know, hey, guys, here's a picture of the weight at Miami, at uh. And you see police cars waiting there. Another thing that I've noticed in the last several months, and I haven't seen anything like this in in all my years. We are Baker Act-ing three to five people a week. You know, and you get out there, we had a call at the um, uh, Polio Tropical Burger King. Where an individual's harassing customers, homeless, we get there, I'm crazy, I'm suicidal, I wanna kill myself, I haven't taken my meds. Well, we can't just walk. Citrus Baker Act, that officer's gone for two hours, you know. Uh, Saturday night, well, let me backtrack, Thursday, we had an incident that Miami Springs in, where the clerk behind. The the counter was assaulted, turned out, they took ninety dollars from us, so now it becomes a strong armed robbery. Well, we immediately, our detectives did a great job, identified the individuals involved, identified the car, so we put that out there. So Saturday, around nine PM, a little bit after nine, our officers are dealing with a lady on on Curtis. Who's got a warrant, that officer takes her to warrants, he's gone for about two hours. At the same time, they find the car with the two individuals at the assault at Miami Springs Inn out in Aventura, uh, close to Aventura. So now we gotta send two units out there, because it's two subjects, we wanna separate them to transport them back in the city. So that left us with one sergeant, one officer, on afternoons, luckily, the midnight shift overlapped, so we had some officers to assist. But just as uh the councilman was saying, the last council meeting, we had a complicated call at one of the hotels, so the entire shift was there. But so those are all things, and on top with all the calls at the hotels, that is just draining our officers, draining our resources.
To the chair, I know that we have the nuisance payment and that it's for a certain criteria of of calls. So it's very, a very nichey um ordinance. But Heidi or Roger, can we, we have an ordinance here, section one-one-eight dash zero four. Which says determination of average number of police service available. After that, oh oh five says user charge established, oh six, amount of user charge, oh seven. Responsibility of owners and occupational licenses. Which one of those ordinances would fall into place to help our police officers? Cause we we have here that we can charge, I just don't know if we're charging, and these are not for for any of these types of crimes. I'll fall into the nuisance uh ordinance, these are, it says, the city council shall establish by resolution. The average number of police services available to all business entities within the city during a fiscal year. The average number of police services may be increased or decreased by the city council by resolution after hearing. In determining the average number of police services available to business, businesses generally. The city council shall take into consideration the number of contin- of contiguous business parcels or lots occupied by a single business entity. And the number of occupational licenses issu- issued to businesses located thereon. There was, the resolution shall step forth a contingent call factor and other criteria necessary from time to time. To ensure equitable determination of the average number of police services available to any single business entity.
I think we 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 discussed this.
I I know, but I I wanna know, are are we using this? Because this is where we we are, we are not using it.
We are not using it because that's an ordinance that was written, I think, in the late seventies. Before significant case law came out relating to user fees. And whether you can actually impose a user fee for police, um, police service. So in light of that, we've taken the other approach with the nuisance abatement. I I wish we could use that ordinance that's on our books. Um, but I'm happy to discuss further with you offline, um, about that ordinance, it's just not something that we recommend. It's just not something that we recommend using at this point.
I, I know, but it looks, section 118, zero seven also talks about responsibility of owners and occupational licenses, where they have a certain, like, these businesses have a certain responsibility that they have to enact. So we have a little bit of relief. So yeah, I would like to look into a little bit more because we're suffering. And then everyone wants to talk about, oh, funds this, funds that, we need more cops. But we're not, I, I will talk to Heidi about this because this has been like a hamster wheel going over and over.
Through, through the chair.
Yeah, true. Two questions. Um, councilman, if I had mentioned that the hotels do pay some taxes to the city. Do we have an idea how much that is?
Uh, not offhand, but I can look at, I know I did an analysis, uh, a few years ago when we were going through this. But I'd have to update it with the new.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a good point and we need to know, but to make sure. I mean, we know what it costs us, right? To, to police, uh, provide the services to the hotels like we provide the services to all the residents. So that's, that's, uh, I, I'd like to know that. Um, and, and the, my second question is, and chief, you may know this, or, or William, our particular situation, right? In terms of how much it costs us, the residents of Miami Springs, to offset the, the cost of policing the hotels, is there any, or are there any other cities or townships who have a similar problem? That we may know of? Yes. So those, yeah, so I, because, yes. I mean, I, I, I don't dye my hair. The gray hair is, you know, part of, a part of my years. At the end of the day, this is a political problem. Yeah, it's a political problem because, you know, county has the resource, they, they get the taxes, they get the bulk of the bed tax, the, the visitors bureau, you know, they have the, you know, they, they, they're promoting the city. That's why they don't want anyone tampering with this, with this arrangement. But I, I go back to our residents and we're carrying the burden of this, right? And, and I think that we have to find some kind of equitable way. So if we can get that information, uh, William, uh, so I'm clear and we're clear. What taxes do they actually pay? You know, is, how much is that relative to the $2 million it's costing the, the taxpayers? And then if, um, and I'll, and I'll, you know, I'll help out with this too. I want to know this answer. Are there other municipalities that are in this situation? Because we, we do have a large percentage of, of hotels relevant to our size and, right? And, and, you know, so some of these other big cities, Miami Beach, you know, the places where they have, um, larger numbers, uh, hotels. Because I think that we, we need to, we need to provide, um, first of all, we need to provide relief for our residents. And, uh, and second, um, we, we need to figure out some kind of a way to, to, you know, cross this threshold. Because, and, and I say it's political because other, other interests don't want to give in, right? Because of the, you know, the, what it does for their respective cities and so forth and, and operations. But, you know, at the end of the day, uh, you know, I'm a city councilman in Miami Springs, not in Miami Beach.
So through the chair, I think there, there's a political aspect of it, um, obviously. And, and the mayor, I remember, uh, spoke, uh, actually, it was, it was when it was here at the country club when we hosted the Miami-Dade League of Cities. I'm pretty sure that's the one where she, where she presented about this and presented it to, to, uh, all the members of the League of Cities. There are other municipalities that are in our boat. There are four municipalities that are exempt, uh, because they got grandfathered in, uh, uh, to the bed tax. They get to keep their own bed tax. But there are other municipalities that are in our boat and that, that is a political problem, which has its own political solution, which we need to keep working on and we need to talk to our lobbyists and we need to try to, uh, garner support from other municipalities that are in our, uh, in our same predicament. I would also argue for a practical solution that we just need to fund more officers. And that's something that we're, we're going to begin that process, the budget process now over the summer. And that, that can be one of our goals. This is something that we've been working on. I think another, another, you know, uh, uh, I, I think that this wasn't the forum to go so deep into the ordinances. But I think that if, uh, I know that cities like Coral Gables charge like a, a police fee, uh, I, I'll appeal again to the city attorneys to see what other options. I know this is something that we dealt with, uh, during and after the pandemic. Uh, it's something that we've been actively working on. Uh, it's really nothing new, right? We're dealing with the same things, uh, other than we, we can just keep moving forward and, and I'm not waiting for Superman. Uh, we'll keep working the political process, uh, and, and the city attorneys can work on, on other options that we can explore. Uh, but I think we need to just fund, fund more officers so that we have more boots on the ground. Uh, and, and I think that's the way for, and I think that we need to continue to work on what we do with the 36th Street Business Corridor so that we can attract, you know, the, uh, the type of economic development there that, that won't result in, you know, blighted, uh, parts of the community with, with, uh, low, low fee hotels.
Through the chair. Thank you, Walter. I agree with you a hundred percent. Um, just so, so I can finish on my end. Would it be possible, I know that Heidi mentioned that we do not use the ordinance that I mentioned, um, earlier today, section 118. I would like to know when we did use it, if William or Tammy, you can get me the number of funds we received when we were actually executing this ordinance. Cause I want to see what money we, we got through that. Just so I can come, I want to, I want to see, no, because I need to understand why we're not using it. I want to see how much money we wait for it, how much that can possibly offset the $2 million deficit that we're having on 36th Street. I need to look at all of that to understand the bigger picture. And it's political, you're right. And I will adjust this with Cabrera tomorrow.
But this part of it, councilwoman, I encourage you to talk to, to Heidi, to Roger and, and to, um, put a discussion item where we talk just about this aspect of it, right? About what is in the ordinance, what we can do, what are the municipalities, that's, that's part of it. That's one part of it. The other part of it is the political side of it and trying to see how we can get some more taxes from the state that they don't tend to like making taxes.
That's why I was requesting.
Right, of course. And I feel like we just have to fund more officers and then that's how we attack it from, from all angles.
But through the chair. Go ahead. I, I'm, I'm, listen, I'm, I'm with Councilman Fahad. We, we need to, as the, the saying used to go, uh, you know, it's more way, more, more than one way to skin a cat. My concern is, and I'm for funding more police. I remember one time when I first started, chief came in and, and his request was to be able to hire three officers. And then we went back and forth and some people said, no, we can only afford to hire one and then, and I think we hired two. Again, we have a limited pocket, I mean, a, a bucket of, of funds. And, and I don't want to sit up here and talk about increasing taxes, you know, to, to fund more police. We need to fund more police, there's no question in my mind about it. I'm just trying to figure out, uh, you know, how do we, how do we try to work this in a more equitable fashion? I agree, budget time's coming up, something to look at. I'm sure the chief is getting his, uh, list ready, uh, for us as well. But, um, you know, it, 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 it doesn't change the situation on the ground for Miami Springs Police Officers. That's, that's my, my, my most important concern and the fact that the residents are the ones that are paying for that. And at the same time, are, I don't want to see the word cheated because, but you can't have officers in two places at once. And sometimes people say, well, you know, call then, and where's the officer over here? Well, you know, sometimes the officers are attending other calls that don't have to do with the immediate, uh, uh, needs of the community. So I, I believe in a multi-pronged approach, but I think I, you know, I'm, I'm not a mathematician, but I like numbers. And, and so if there's something that can clarify the picture in terms of what, the, the $2 million that we're not getting through bed tax, what is being offset by the taxes paid by those businesses to the city? Right? And, and then, uh, and then keep moving that needle. But we got to keep, we got to take another, we got to keep taking another bite at the apple. That's my point.
Yep. Well, I want to finish here, I guess, uh, obviously with Councilman Fahad said, the only way we can immediately try to resolve something like this is with maybe, uh, extra funding based on our budget. So that's one way right now. But the reality is, it's like annexation. The same thing with the bed tax. We're going to start, or how are we going to be able to change something that hasn't been changed and is super difficult and has to go to the state? Talking about a lot of money going there and it still hasn't been done. So why don't we just concentrate on, like, Councilman Fahad said, Councilman is correct, 36th Street. We're going to be talking about it, we're going to discuss it, how we can improve it. Economic activity or downtown, sales of buildings, that's going to bring us more revenue. And obviously, the more revenue we get, we're taking care of our own stuff, we're going to be able to address that issue. So let's not talk about things that are going to take too long in the future. Let's talk about today.
I'm all for, I'm all for raise, I, 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 you know, all of us have run on, on raising revenues for the city. Right? And getting more business, that's, that's, that's a priority. I'm just, just concerned that in the meantime, right? You know, that's, it's, it's not fair to, to our residents, but that's it. You know, I, I, I didn't come here to, to, to put a proposal specifically on the, on the, on the table, but rather to redirect our thinking, um, i- i- in this direction. So, um, hopefully, chief, we'll, we'll be able to do better in terms of, uh, funding needs, uh, particularly personnel. I think that's what, what we're talking about because I think we've really done a fairly good job in terms of funding other needs of equipment and, and, and other things that, uh, that the department ha- has needed up to now, so.
Thank you, chief. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Just move to, uh, 12C, which is a request by myself, Vice Mayor Sanz, to discuss joining and applying for the Main Street membership. You're telling me how that works, the city attorney, since I'm now the sitting mayor?
I, I am actually not entirely.
You can present, you can present the item, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I can present it?
Yes.
Okay.
Present it for.
Okay, I present it. So I motion to.
I, I remember you, uh, I remember you coming when you were, uh, under, under your capacity in the Economic Development Board. I remember, uh, you know, I, I remember that we saw a video about it, we talked about it. Uh, do you want to just review for us what is involved in becoming a member?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, uh, cost wise to cities, it's minors, that, uh, it's, it's the resources that we could have for a lot of the city administration people that have, uh, you know, they have seminars, courses that help with the revitalization of, and, uh, improving economic activities in similar towns like us. They've done it over 2,000 communities, some in historic preservation, some in, uh, and just a, uh, improving economic activity. And I, I, I think the cost is like 500 bucks. So it's not anything that's going to put a dent to us. But I just thought, like, recently, there's going to be a, a, a grant that we could have applied. We're not going to be, have the time to do it in, in the July. But they have a bunch of resources and things that I think our administration could, you know, at one point could just, uh, call and, and get, uh, insight from other communities and things that we want to do. And we've been just talking about right now, 36th Street downtown, revitalizing it, improving the economic activity. Well, these guys have done it to cities that have been dormant for a long time, have helped them through the process. So I think for $500, it's, uh, it's worth, uh, joining in.
Uh, if I may, I was, um, as I spoke to some of you, I don't think I, not to speak to all of you, but this is one of the recommendations that came from the business and task force. Um, and as you know, we will be having a workshop to address that, those recommendations. So maybe this is something that at that workshop can be decided on when we do all of the work, because there are some important recommendations there, especially I know for 36th Street that need to be done as far as ordinance changes and all that. So we can take all these, all of these and handle them at that time.
Yes, I like. Is the, is that going to be, what day is that going to be? Because the 16th is the, is the workshop. I thought that was the goal work, the goals workshop.
Strategic planning, that's.
And implementation of the 36th Street recommendations, that's a lot.
No.
I, I think we're going to, uh, I was talking to my mayor about maybe having, this workshop is only for the strategic, the goals and what we're currently doing.
Okay.
We need a separate one just for the task.
Yes, I agree. I agree. The, what, there were tons of great suggestions at the Economic Development Board, uh, presentation. And I feel like we need a meeting just to go, and, and that was only half of it because we didn't even do the parking half of it. But I think that there needs to be a separate workshop just for that, independent of the 30,000 foot view, uh, goals.
I just think that this is something like really minor in the sense of cost to us, but also resources that we can also use. Cause the, the moment the city joins it, all of us could actually have access to a lot of the resources. Uh, so to me, I don't think it's a, a need to wait for this particular item, uh, considering, uh, the resources the city could have, us as council people and administration. So to me, I'd call to see what can.
I, I would rather expedite scheduling, putting on the calendar when we're going to go through. I, I don't want to single out one thing from the recommendations from the Economic Development Board. I also like that way, you know, there could be like a little write-up on, like, I think that we need to look at all that stuff together. I think we just need to get it on the calendar. I know that, that we're meeting a lot, but that's how it works now this time of year.
We had talked about doing that workshop after the parking study came in, just so that we could have the results from the parking study analysis.
So we split up the Economic Development Board, uh, report in two. And it was, uh, just, just the half that we went over that was about 36th Street was a lot. I think that we should meet on that. I know you had brought it up, councilman, that when are we going to get moving on it? I feel like we need to get it on the calendar and we need to start, uh, because we, we took a lot of notes and we'd like, hey, this is something we can get done. Like, I think we can get all that knocked out, but I think we need to just concentrate on, on that and not start cherry picking things out of it. I, I, I think that it's important and we need to look at that even before we do the parking study and, and get into all that. I, I feel like that's something that's important that we need to start moving on now.
Through, through the chair. So, um, I was responding to the mayor's recommendation at the last meeting when I brought this up in, in my report at the very end. And, and, and so she had said to talk to Erica. What I was talking about was not trying to cherry pick, but rather establishing a, uh, you know, whether it's a, uh, it's a calendar or, you know, process for discussing that report. Because like you said, there are many things, I was at the workshop that you guys had. And, uh, it was just more of a strategic way of thinking about how are we going to work with this report? As opposed to saying, what about this, what about that? And of course, um, the, the parking study, you all made the decision, which I thought was important, that, uh, you know, we had a, we had a pushback the data, uh, of the parking study. And I think we got permission from the grant, uh, we got for that to, to extend it. That's all great. Um, so if we, if it has to be something other than the May 16th, I wasn't thinking about getting into the, to the weeds, uh, with the report, but rather put it on calendar to, and if that, that has to, if that's, I don't have a problem with it being on another date, right? I, I, I don't disagree with adding meetings that we need because we need them. We had that, we had that task force meet for over a year. There are a lot of good things that came out, really need to look at and say, okay, where are we going to prioritize from here?
I just remembered that at the, at the presentation at the community center, I know that, uh, William and staff and the city planner went through Mark Trowbridge and the committee's recommendations. And I remember that there were lots of actionable things that were like, that's a good idea, this can get done, right? I just feel like we need to meet on everything, because that was two and a half hours, almost three hours that we were there. I feel like if we sit down, there's going to be a lot of good stuff that we can get done because it was already, it was already done. Like it was, we just need to move on it. Um, and, and I think that that way, staff, I, I think that if we just look at it and sit down, like, we'll get a lot of this stuff done right away. I, I don't think that we should wait.
And that, and that was through the chair. And that was my, my comments, the night of the meeting at the community center was to look at what to prioritize. As you said, uh, councilman, what are the things, what are the items that we could look at and just say, okay, we can move quickly with it. But even that needs some planning, right? To go through it, pick them out and say, okay, here's things that parking study, that's, that's a longer range thing. There's a few other items that we need to put in place, but they're going to take longer. But, uh, as you mentioned, the chairman of the, of the task force said, yeah, here are some things that, you know, they're actionable. So, uh, so, yeah, so we calendar another time for that, that'd be great. That's fine. I don't, I don't oppose that.
Yeah, I just looked, to be honest, yeah, just still, to me, it's a way of, uh, getting, uh, resources to actually think about what we're going to do. Because, uh, this is a strategic plan and it has to be well thought out. It's not just about talking about 36th Street. Believe me, this community is not going to just listen to that and that's going to happen. So we have to have a vision about what the community is going to have, how the community is going to look. And, uh, and I think that these, this, this network, we can use this in the interim of getting to that point of those big meetings where we're going to talk about real serious stuff that we need to discuss. I think we can ha- use it. that we need to discuss. I think we can ha- use it as a reference. We can call other uh, council people in other cities. I mean, these guys have the network and for such a minor amount of money, I don't think we need to wait months from now. That's all I'm saying. It's just a, it's a place where we ourselves could get a source of, of information.
To the chair. Um, I'm trying to catch up here. Uh, Vice Mayor Santin, what is the cost for the membership? Do you know?
Well, like, it was actually less than five hundred bucks as I joined it with the task force, me personally as a citizen.
I'm gonna ask you a question, so I'm not familiar.
Yeah, I think it's less than five hundred bucks.
And the incentives to that, they, they do what?
They allow a certain amount of people that you would uh, choose to allow, have access to all the resources. And of course, if there's seminars and, and stuff that you wanna get more education on, like they have one now promoting the communities. Uh, you don't, you would obviously just join the membership and take the class and do whatever you need to do, but these resources are there with that, with that national membership from the community, we all have access to it. That's all. I mean, I just say, you like to use it or not.
Be a good thing, you would, you say this would be a good thing to maybe uh, put Chris in front of this as well, our city planner, so that.
They give you a certain amount of, you know, and we have to discuss which ones, how many members that get put on there, but of course, he would be an important part of it.
I think uh, Councilman, I think I'm gonna piggyback with Councilman Fahet to put this on the workshop. Correct? Is that what we were talking? Cause I came in.
Yes.
And let's get, I mean, that's a minimal amount to invest considering the good things that I'm hearing about it. Um.
It was a recommendation.
Right, it was definitely a recommendation.
Let's, let's meet and let's get some of that stuff done.
Yes.
All right.
It's a yes, we can.
Okay, well. Very. Okay.
Vice Mayor, twelve D, is you?
Twelve D?
No, twelve D.
Twelve D is you? You put it on there?
Oh, we did. Just right, we're gonna add, we're, we talked discussing uh, two new members to the uh, to the Centennial Committee, um, names that we can bring up, that can discuss and approve. Two of the names that I have put up, my, everybody's gonna have a chance to obviously discuss. Uh, we asked Julie Arias, which is the chair of the Centennial, who she would recommend. I think that puts a lot of weight on somebody that she wants, and she mentioned a gentleman by name Alex Aguiar. I think she told him, he told, she told the mayor about that. Um, so this gentleman, if she talks, I think he, she helped him during the River City. Was a hands-to-hand uh, assistant to her, and she would like to see him as the ad, ad large uh, committee.
Was there anybody else? Was there a second person that you had?
The person I thought that I wanted to put back is Jennifer Graham, who served in there before she decided to uh, to run for city council. So those are the two names.
I, I, I think that if, I think Jennifer would be wonderful, and, and if this other person is being recommended by, by Julie, who's the, who's heading the Centennial Committee. I, I, I think that I have no problem with having two non-voting members join uh, based on those recommendations.
I, I'll second that. We, we did ask Julie to, to, to make recommendations, right? Because she, in her report, she talked about subcommittees and it's all gonna take a lot of folks. So I, I hadn't thought about uh, folks, but I will think about names for future meetings. He said, you know, we can keep adding, you know, for folks to help. Especially if they got specific skill sets um, uh, to help uh, the work of the, of the, of the commission, then that, that would be great. So.
All right.
So we, we vote on the first.
I'm sorry, what's the gentleman's name?
Alex Aguiar.
Aguilar?
I think it's A-G-U-I-A-R.
I-A-R.
Not an L, I don't. If it's the same gentleman that I'm thinking.
Well, Jennifer just, I'm sorry, Jennifer, Julie, Julie gave it.
Does he, does he live on South Royal Pointiana?
He's a Springs guy, I don't know that. Julie just told me, uh, it's, her name is Alex A-G-U-I-A-R.
Aguilar.
To the chair.
Yeah.
Can you explain to me what the purpose of, what was it this, um, member at large? What is their actual role? And how would they impact a decision being a non-voting member?
To the chair, um, a- at the discussion when we adopted, where the council adopted the resolution establishing the Centennial Committee, one of the conversations that was had was to have input from other residents that may not become uh, board members. And also to uh, have potential businesses who are not residents of the city, participate just by providing information. So a non-voting member doesn't count George Quorum, doesn't vote on any recommendations of the advisory board, but does provide information.
Okay, so I remember, cause I voted on that. So what, what would be the difference of them sitting in the public audience with the committee and signing up to discuss something that would be favorable to the execution of, of the committee?
I can answer that. I think, I think it would empower, it would, if you have residents that are willing and they're being recommended, I think it would empower them to, to uh, to be even more engaged, rather than just, you know, participating in, in the audience. I think that if we have people that want to join that are being recommended, that, that, that we know, we know, like particularly the case of Jennifer, we, we know that they're, that they have lots of great ideas and, and a long track record of vested interest in the city. I think that it's, you know, I, I, I think that we should not turn people away who are, and I, I'm not saying that you're recommending that, right?
Just understand the concept before we draft work for the ones.
Yeah, just through the chair, by me. Um, when we initially talked about this body, we, we knew that this was gonna take a lot of people to work. And, and it's gonna be large, and we're thinking about, and, and, and the report, uh, Julie, Julie's report uh, at the last meeting was pretty comprehensive. And that was one of the things I was thinking about, that she, they, they set up five subcommittees. And so these are people that could fill in depending on their skill sets, and I think it was fundraising and outreach and so forth. Uh, again, this is like the army, if you will. Now, you know, these are non-voting members, they uh, they don't quorum, it doesn't have any impact. It's like having soldiers.
Should we add more than two?
Yeah. And more than two, no, we talked about that, you know, that we.
Okay.
You know, you have ideas, anyone who has recommendations, I will certainly think about this for the next meeting.
Gonna ask a question to City Attorney, in reference to the, sorry, but, so you still looking? Um, in reference to uh, the, our large uh, members, if could they fill in for, in quorum, like if there's a need for quorum?
No, if they're gonna be appointed as non-voting members, that would be their.
That'd be it. Okay, so like call for approval, those two?
But I think there's consensus.
Okay. I believe there was.
Was there a motion?
There was from Councilman Bahet and then a second by Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
So, um, Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Bahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Santin?
Yes.
The motion carries.
And, and to be clear, we can appoint a whole lot more. And it's gonna take that many people to do this.
Yeah, I mean, cause, you know, they people have such complicated lives.
Um, I guess we'll go to item thirteen, reports, reports from City Attorney first, City Attorney?
Uh, unless my colleague Heidi on the line has anything to report, I don't have anything. Just very happy to see you guys all tonight.
No reports this evening, ma- uh, Vice Mayor and Council.
Happy to, we're happy to hear that you're doing better.
Yeah.
Overall, yes, just counting down the days to the arrival of number two.
Moving right along. Go to the city manager.
Um, so I have a few announcements. Uh, the Aquatic Center will be closing Thursday, May eleventh uh, due to a filtration system uh, being repaired on the pool. We're also um, having a blood drive on Monday, May fifteenth from one P M to eight P M. Uh, so please, uh, if you can join that. We also have our Community Shred Day, which is on Tuesday, May sixteenth from four to seven, where you can drop off up to four boxes uh, free of charge at the community center. And then uh, at the Rebecca Sosa Theater, the Pelican Playhouse is presenting uh, the play, The, The Hobbit. So if you uh, sign up for that, that would be um, nice for them to have uh, participants in the audience. Um, also, I just want to um, reiterate, please keep uh, Leah and Daryl Cates in your prayers um, this evening and for the weeks to come, hopefully uh, he will uh, recover from. And then I also wanted to give you uh, an update on the South Royal Pointiana project. I know there's been a lot of uh, discussion about uh, the median and how it's coming along. I hope some of you have already gone over there and seen. Um, there are going to be uh, three, possibly four good turnarounds on that median in order to make, uh, to go northbound on those uh, to those apartments. So unlike what is being, you know, told uh, to the residents um, that there were blocking off all of those apartment buildings, that is incorrect. And I, I would, if you would like, I can do the same thing. Mayor and I walked the entire, from East Drive all the way down to Lejeune Road, and I walked her through with the plans on those, but um, it's gonna be indeed a beautiful project um, with that median. And I also have spoken to uh, some residents. I believe, I think one of them is Alex, so. Yes, um, and then.
Through the chair on that, uh, I was sharing with Councilman Fahed earlier that my daughter um, drives, Sophia likes to enter the city, you know, right off of one twelve and come up. And she would say, well, how are people gonna make left turns and this and that? And I, I was explaining the fact that um, this is actually a better way to make a left turn if you are heading um, east on it, because there will be that cutout, whereas before you had a double yellow line and you were making a illegal left turn into two lanes of traffic. So this is gonna facilitate that. And I think there are some other, a couple of other left turns people can make, I think into.
You can make it northbound, you can make them southbound.
Correct, correct, yes.
Basically. And just, you know, again, the overall purpose of the project was to slow down traffic in that area, add some beautification to the area. And, you know, and keep in mind, the county had to approve these plans, because um, this went all through the county approval process, and they would not allow us to add any more, any more turns than we have done. So we put the, the most possible amount of turns that we could under the county's approval. So, and this was, this was vetted through.
Additional sidewalks.
Well, we're.
South side.
We're having a dead, designate, uh, designated bike lane on the north side of the property, you know, uh, South Royal, and on the right uh, south side of the property, we are going to have a shared uh, bike lane. So it's definitely gonna enhance it. And I think the overall, um.
We added sidewalk.
You know, we added sidewalks to the project, so I think the overall enhancement of the project is gonna be something just wonderful.
Royal Pointiana.
Yes, it's um.
Agree.
Um, and then also, I wanted to just let everybody know that um, next uh, next week, the eighteenth and nineteenth, we will begin um, adding the grass to the driving range as well as the holes one through nine on the uh, what they call collar greens. I'm not a golfer, so I don't know what a collar green is, but it apparently is the outer perimeter of the bunkers and the tees, I think. So um, but uh, we will begin doing the grassing on the eighteenth and nineteenth to holes one through nine and the driving range.
Come.
That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, well, City Council, I guess the rest, I wanna start with me. Okay.
You decide.
Um, it's at the uh, well, I just wanna go back to the decision we made last council meeting in reference to the uh, fireworks. It was a good decision, and I think this also is a reason that we need to get the residents to get, participate a little bit more in the process, because sometimes there's a lot of misinformation out there. This decision was not only about the money. Majority of it is because of the golf course and the money that we're investing there, not about the police. So everybody keeps talking to me, calling me. It's about, we turned down the uh, the golf, the uh, fireworks because of the fourteen thousand dollars that she had brought up. Absolutely not. At least in my sense, it's all about the golf course. That's the main reason that we were concerned what was happening. And go heat.
Are you gonna go in this order? Um, nothing to report, not to piggyback off of what uh, uh, Vice Mayor Santin was saying, talking about funds, that's definitely not the reason why we did that. But then there's also talks of, well, what are they gonna do with the funds now? Well, I don't know. We'll talk to William, what we wanna do with those funds. The funds are there. Um, but, I'm sorry? I mean, it's just the thing, oh, the taxing, I pay taxes here too. Did you not forget? You know, I, I understand that we're not using those funds, and then I, I'm sure we'll put it to good use. We have a lot of wants, right, on this workshop?
No kidding. Yes, no kidding.
So um, I have nothing else to report. Thank you, Tammy. Sorry if I was a, a little rough today. It's been a long day. Uh, I appreciate my colleagues. So just to make that clear, that's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, William, do you think that we can ask Omar to, has he given any thought? I know he's, he's going crazy trying to like get all the Fourth of July events that we have planned to be able to work, given all that. But maybe there's something extra that we can do, like some kind of like, you know, carnival on Prince Field or something where we can give out some food? Do you think maybe he can think about some, something?
They usually do an event at the Aquatic Center.
Right.
Yes, we do.
Maybe we can, maybe we can fund something, you know, a little extra to do some, something extra, maybe put that on his radar. Not like he isn't already really busy, but thank you. Um, yeah, so thank you to everybody. Um, and, and I just wanna say that my insistence that we always be like super beyond reproach uh, when it comes to process is just because it's what I think is, it puts us in the best standing to make decisions. It in no way is a reflection of, of, of the kinda job I think that Tammy is going to do as interim, because I think that she's going to do a, a great job. Uh, but just wanted to, to throw that out there, that uh, that's where it comes from a, a place of uh, of, of wanting to, to do what I think is, is best and advocating for that. But appreciate all you guys uh, uh, for, for letting us all think out loud and, and, and make the best decisions possible for the city. Thank you.
Um, just one thing, I, I, I just wanted to applaud the efforts of Public Works folks. I was out at Arbor Day where they were planting palm trees and Royal Pointianas. I have a special place in my heart for Royal Pointianas. Uh, my mother used to have one in front of her home. My mother was a hibara from the hinterlands of Puerto Rico. I think you Cubans call it wajira. Um, and, and uh, and, and of course, we call them flamboyanas in, in Puerto Rico and in Cuba. And it was great to be there and see the work uh, that was being done. I can't wait for them to, to, to grow, but uh, I was really impressed that we're putting in, I don't know how many feet that palm tree was, but just watching them do that kinda work was, was very impressive. I was very happy. I was out there. Uh, thank you for having that. And um, and to our uh, to our city attorney, God bless you over the next few weeks and uh, and, and, and good luck with everything.
Call to adjourn this meeting?
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
I'll come back with this.
Sure.